Okay.
Hey.
All right, so this is, uh, this is the first session of a, of a course on Revelation. I, uh, I just started working on plans for, um, for how we're gonna do that mana and mercy book, and it looks like we'll start that probably on October fourteenth. So we'll keep looking at Revelation, um, you know, for the next five weeks or so until we get to there. So my guess is we'll get through about a chapter a week, so, um, you know, then we'll, we'll take a break from Revelation then. So before we, we dive in, um, what do you all know about the book of Revelation, or what, what, what thoughts do you have about it?
It's scary.
Mm-hmm.
Mysterious.
Mm-hmm.
Hopeful.
And, and I certainly hope we find that in there because that, that's not the first thing we think of when we think of the, the book of Revelation now. Okay.
Yeah, I find it confusing, so I just avoid it. So I, I'm interested in trying to, I guess, see what it's all about since I don't, I'm not motivated to do it on my own, so.
Yeah, that's, you know, and, and, and like, like all of scripture, you know, this was, um, not originally written for people to read on their own. All of scripture was, was, uh, was composed to be proclaimed in, in the community and to be talked about in the community. So this is, this is the place to do it. You know, th- this is not the community they imagined. They didn't think it would be people staring at big rectangles where there's other people in front of them, you know? But, uh, but this is a community just like the communities of, of the, the first century. Um, anything else?
Well, when I was reading the introduction here, it's, the identity is not known of the author, really. They call, they think it's a, a John, but there are several Johns. So makes you wonder how many people really were involved in writing it.
Yeah, the author, uh, does identify himself with a narrator identifies himself as John, but, um, but yeah, that was, it was a common name. Um, and it was also not uncommon for people to use, you know, other names than, than the actual author, you know? The letters we have of Paul, most scholars are pretty confident that only some of them are originally letters of Paul. Um, and the others, uh, were, were written by people, um, who followed Paul, who were, you know, in the same kind of school of thought as he was, but, but that they attached his name as a way of kind of claiming authority. And, and in those days, that wasn't seen as plagiarism. It wasn't seen as, as anything, you know, illegitimate to do that. It was just, um, you, you used your teacher's name as a, as a way of, of saying that I'm, I'm writing this from the Pauline School of Thought. So the same might be true here, you know, this, this might have been written by someone who, um, you know, who followed someone named John. It's, it's very hard to, to know for sure. Okay. Well, the book of Revelation, um, I do have a bit of an intro here before we, we start reading, um, is, uh, is big. Um, and not, not in terms of its length, though it, it's not short, um, but more in terms of its scope. It's huge. It covers the entirety of creation from the beginning to the end. Um, and I'm not sure it's possible to fully understand it for anybody. It's a majestic poetic epic story. And, uh, and, and I think it's really important that, uh, that, that we gather together and talk about it. That's the way the, that the stories of scripture were intended. Revelation was probably written about the year one hundred by someone who had, who was identified as John. There is a tradition that says that, uh, that all the Johns in the Bible are the same person, that this John is the same one who wrote the gospel, and they're both the same one who was an apostle of Jesus. There's no real evidence for that apart from the similar name, um, although there's no strong evidence against it, except that if Revelation was written in the year one hundred, that John was pretty darn old at that point, but, but that's possible. I don't believe that they're the same person. I think the apostle and the gospel writer and the writer of Revelation are three different people, but I don't think it hurts anything to, to believe they are the same person, so, um, so we're not gonna focus too much on that. The, but the John who wrote Revelation says that, uh, that he was on the island of Patmos, which is a Greek island, um, off the coast of modern day Turkey. And early tradition says that the reason he was on Patmos is because he was exiled there, um, for his, uh, for his Christian faith, and that, and that may be true. Now, the time that John was writing was a very difficult time for the Christian church. By now, the church had pretty much separated itself from the synagogue. It was not viewed as a, as a Jewish sect, um, so much as a, a new religion. And they were being attacked on every side. You know, as we talked about before, Rome had sacked the temple or sacked Jerusalem and destroyed the temple. And Judaism was trying to redefine itself without the temple and, and didn't really have time to, to deal with these upstart Christians. The, uh, you know, and Rome was, was routinely killing Christians by this point. You know, we've heard stories about the, the, the Christians being thrown to the lions in the arena in Rome, and, and those, you know, those stories are accurate. That, that kind of thing was happening when, when this was written. Now, the early church believed that Christ was gonna return in their lifetimes. And this was a rough time because around the year one hundred, most people in that first generation were gone. And, uh, and, and they were really trying to come to terms with, with where was Christ, you know? Why hadn't he returned yet? Why was the world, you know, going to hell like this? And, and, and they weren't seeing what they expected to see. And the book of Revelation, um, was an attempt to give a response to these questions. The, the word revelation comes from its first word in, in, uh, in the Latin translation. The first word in this book is revelatus, which is a translation of the Greek word apocalypse, um, which means something that is unveiled, something that is revealed. So this book is designed to be an unveiling or revealing of Jesus Christ, um, which is kind of ironic, given that this book, is seen as, as something, you know, so mysterious and confounding. One thing that, that I think is really important is that the book is called Revelation, not Revelations. Um, and that's not just me being picky. It, it also is, is because this is one revelation. It is the revelation of Jesus. This shows us who Jesus is, who he was, who he will be, and what that means for us. So as you read through this book, I invite you to hear it, um, not literally, but poetically and artistically. You know, certain portions of the Bible are poetry and were never intended to be taken literally. You know, when, when, when we say the Lord is, is our rock, you know, it was not the intention of the author to say that the Lord is made of stone, um, but to say that, that the Lord is, is a firm, you know, foundation we can, we can rely on. The Lord is my shepherd and we are his sheep. You know, it doesn't literally mean that we are sheep and, and that, that, that God is a shepherd. It's a, it's a metaphor, and I think the entire book of Revelation is in, in a lot of ways a metaphor. In, in a poetic way. And it's, it's also important, I think, to remember that, um, that this book was not written for relatively comfortable Christians living in a country where Christianity is well-accepted. It was written for Christians who were living under constant persecution, who were in fear for their lives and who, um, you know, probably suffered in a lot of ways, including, um, you know, poverty and, and, and other things like that. So it's good to remember that this is written to, to a people who were, were on the, the other side. Who were on the, kind of on the underside of society. One thing I, I think I, I wanna get out of the way right at the beginning is the idea of the rapture. It's probably a concept you've heard about, the idea that sometime in the future, all of the faithful will suddenly be whisked away, will be taken away, fly up into the air and be taken to heaven, while the rest of us suffer here on earth for seven years of torment. And there's been a whole bestselling series of books and movies written about this. But the thing about the rapture is it's not biblical. It's a theory that was invented in eighteen thirty. If you told Martin Luther about the rapture, he wouldn't know what you're talking about. If you told, you know, John the other revelation about the rapture, wouldn't know what you're talking about because it, nobody thought of it until the nineteenth century. And the idea comes from taking one verse in First Thessalonians along with three verses from Daniel and a couple verses from Matthew, mixing them all together with Revelation in the back of your mind, and, and you get this, um, this idea.
Yeah.
Now, I say it's not biblical. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute June right now. I say it's not biblical, not just because it doesn't come from the Bible, but also because it's, it's kind of anti-biblical. As I understand it, the rapture shows us that God loves certain people and has no concern whatsoever for the rest of the world. That God has no concern for animals or plants or the earth itself, that the idea is that God's gonna take the people God loves away and let the earth burn. And, um, and that is not the God that we see in the Bible. The God of the Bible created the world in all its richness and called it good. The God of the Bible saved representatives of all animals from the flood and then promised never again to destroy the world. And, uh, you know, Jesus saved people through his death and showed power through vulnerability, not through the warfare and destruction that, that, um, that often go along with ideas of the rapture. And we'll also see as we read through, um, that the book of Revelation was not intended to be a book of predictions for the distant future. This was never intended to be John's way of saying, this is what's gonna happen in two thousand years. It was intended to be a book of comfort and hope for a people who were suffering. And I think it can be today as well. I think we can find, um, some hope in Revelation if we look for it. So that's my, uh, my, my intro to the book. Any questions about that, any reflections on that?
I just had a comment, I think, I remember my dad used to read, he read the Bible for literature. He loved metaphors, he loved, he said, the beauty of the Bible is amazing. People don't realize that it's, and so he would always read it for that. He'd approach the Bible that way, no matter what he read in the Bible, especially the songs.
Yeah.
But, um, but, um, the other comment that you made about the rapture, that idea further divides us, divides people into, you know, better or worse, or I'm better than you are. And it's completely, it, it just never mystifies me how people could be dividing and yet be full of love, you know? It just doesn't make sense.
Anything else? All right, well, I'm gonna.
Just one quick thing, Michael, to build on what you mentioned, as it's an epic, it, it's one grand story. And, and one of our problems is we tend to dissect the Bible and look at individual passages, and, and you gotta do that. Yet there's a sense in which to hear the whole story at one time, which I think is how it was meant to be read publicly when it was first written, you get the whole thing. I mean, you know, think of it this way, if, if we would watch a movie, a few minutes here, a few minutes here, a few minutes there, we may not get the whole impact. You know, so, you know, I just encourage people, maybe it's sometime, take a couple hours and read your way through the story and, and just make sure you have, you keep the whole story in front of us. I think that's important, otherwise we can, we can get lost in the details.
I think that's a neat point, you know? We just took, um, something like, like eight months to read through, uh, the, the book of Mark. Can you imagine, uh, if we were gonna discuss a movie by, by watching ten minutes of it a week and talking about it? And then watch the next ten minutes, the following week? Yeah, we, we don't do that. Yeah.
There, there's a podcast right now, but guy who's discussing, discussing, um, the Lord of the Rings, and he figures they're gonna end this book study in thirty, or in twenty thirty-one because they're going paragraph by paragraph. And of course, all the people who are part of this study, they've read the Lord of the Rings and the story several times. So, so it's, it's all different, but if that's the only approach you had to this whole thing, it, it just wouldn't make any sense. You know, so, so maybe from time to time, we need to remind ourselves a- as we study these individual passages, let's keep in mind the whole thing.
All right, anything else before we start reading? Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully, boy, this'll start. There we go, everybody, everybody see this? Can everybody see the?
It's pretty bright.
Yeah.
I like it.
It's really colorful.
Mystical.
And I think what you did there with the colors is, it is really fitting for Revelation because it, it, it's, it's a very visual book. It doesn't just tell us something, it, it wants us to see something and wants something to jump out of this with all these images. So that's kind of neat.
Yeah, almost like I thought about this.
It's like virtual reality.
Yeah, right. All right, well, we are gonna read, um, the first eight verses now. Uh, I actually, uh, have them spread over two slides, I think. So, uh, so we're not gonna be able to see the whole thing on the screen at one time. "A revelation of Jesus Christ, which God gave him to show his servants what must soon take place. Christ made it known by sending it through his angel to his servant John, who bore witness to the word of God and to the witness of Jesus Christ, including all that John saw. Favored is the one who reads the words of this prophecy out loud, and favored are those who listen to it being read and keep what is written in it, for the time is near. John, to the seven churches that are in Asia, grace and peace to you from the one who is and was and is coming, and from the seven spirits that are before God's throne, and from Jesus Christ, the faithful witness, the firstborn from among the dead and the ruler of the kings of the earth, to the one who loves us and freed us from our sins by his blood, who made us a kingdom, priests to his God and father. To him be glory and power forever and always. Amen. Look, he is coming with the clouds. Every eye will see him, including those who pierced him, and all the tribes of the earth will mourn because of him. This is so, amen. I am the Alpha and the Omega, says the Lord God, the one who is and was and is coming, the Almighty." So what strikes you about this, this beginning?
First of all, what, what translation is this?
This is the, uh, Common English Bible.
Okay, thank you.
I feel like it kind of sums up everything. Why go on? Like, it kind of covers the whole.
Yep.
The whole thing. Actually, in seriousness, it sounds, you know, like, like a pray, praise, almost like, almost i- i- like, ki- kind of reverent and, um, and sort of like celebratory, so.
It, it feels like something we'd read in church on a very festive day, on like, on Pentecost or Easter or something, you know, a, a major holiday like that. That's how it feels to me.
I, I, I think Kim's right, it does kind of tell the whole story. It kind of introduces, um, the book, the writing, a- and I think John in these verses is, is kind of telling us what he's gonna talk about.
In the Lutheran Study Bible, it calls it an introduction and a salutation.
Yeah, it, it, it bears some similarities to the way, um, the letters, uh, in, in the Bible, letters of Paul and of others, um, begin. Um, and even, you know, in verse four here at the top of the screen, it says, John, to the seven churches that are in Asia. You know, this is, is, it's framed as, as a letter that John is writing to these churches.
Can we go back to the first slide?
Yep.
What, what, what I wanted to point out here is that it's a revelation of Jesus, which God gave to him, that is, God gave it to Jesus. And then it says, Christ made it known by sending it through his angel to his servant John. And so what we got here is God to Jesus, to angel, to John. And, and now think of what's happened since then to get that story to us.
Yeah.
If we were to name everybody who's played a role in transmitting this story to us, we'd be here for days, literally. You know, but so, so this opening verse, I think, does a real nice job of suggesting to us something about the community of faith. The only way we know God is through a community. I mean, God the Father hands it on to God the Son, who hands it on to the angel, hands it on to John, John hands it on to his churches, and so it's gone over the centuries, you know? We're, we're part of this grand story, which is kind of cool.
And, and we're gonna hand it on to somebody else.
You're right, right.
Do, um, on the, on the second slide where it says to the seven churches that are in Asia, like, do we know what those seven churches are? Was that like an established thing, or it's not really important, or?
Well, when we, when we get to chapter, uh, to chapter two, we're gonna see that, um, that each of those churches are named and, um, and, and specific messages go to each one of them. And, and I think, you know, it wasn't that they were the only seven churches there were, um, but I think they, they, they were representative of, of the whole church. The number seven, um, is a, is a number that, that, that is usually considered a divine number in the Bible and means, you know, some sort of perfection. And one, and one thing that, that is very true in Revelation is that numbers are super important. And, and usually not, not to tell us how many of something, but to tell us something about something. Um, and we're gonna see that there are tons of things that come in sevens in Revelation. So it, uh, I, I'm not sure it's, it's really important to understand what, which those churches were from a historical standpoint, but, uh, but the idea that there are seven of them means that they are, they are of God and that this represents a full, the fullness of the church.
One theory, and I don't know how accurate it is, it one theory is that those seven churches were along an established mail route in, 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 in Asia. And it's, and I don't know that the Romans had, had what that meant exactly of a mail route, but, but they, they would have been easy for the letter to circulate to. You know, there may have been better roads, I don't know what all, but, but those seven churches, because it's seven, as you said, represents the whole church. This is sent to the whole church, not just to individual, an individual congregation. You know, but, but, you know, one theory is that they were, it was fairly easy to get it to these. However, John got it to them. We assume, I guess, he sent it by a messenger, but we don't know for sure how he got it to them. You know, had to be hand-carried, I would think, by somebody.
If you note, notice in, in, in verse four, and then again in verse eight, God is identified in, uh, in a very interesting way. God is the one who is and who was and who is coming. And, um, this is a, uh, a common way that, that, that John refers to God. We're gonna see this come up again. And what does that, uh, what does that tell you? What, what, what does framing God in that, that way mean to you?
And it's always the same, is, was, and who is to come, it's the same.
Okay.
That God is still with you, that God is with you because God hasn't left you, and he's with you, and he's going to be, you'll be with you in the future.
Yeah.
So it's a sense of, uh, comfort and, uh, you know, hang in there.
One thing I, I, I really like about the way it's phrased, and I, unfortunately, I didn't think to, to really look into the Greek grammar of this. But instead of saying who is and who was and who will be, it's who is and who was and who is to come. So it's, it, I, I like the idea that, um, that the future aspect of it isn't just saying that, you know, God's still gonna be around in the future. It's saying that, that God is on the way, that God is coming, which, um, which, which can be a real source of hope for people. You know, living in struggle, like right now, people in New Orleans, I'm sure they'd be very happy to hear that the, the utility trucks are on the way. You know, that the, the, the food trucks are on the way, that would, that would help their, you know, their, their emotions a lot, I'm sure.
One interesting thing about this verse, I, I learned in a massive commentary from a guy named Craig Kester. And, and he says that this verse literally says, grace to you and peace from he the is, and he the was, and he the coming one. And, and Kester says, it's really terrible Greek, it's sloppy Greek. And he said, some people have speculated that's because, because, uh, John's second language was Greek. He didn't know it as a firsthand language, but Kester suggests something else. He says it, let me quote this, "The writer deliberately flouts the accepted forms of grammar, which fits the idea that neither the writer nor the God to whom he bears witness is held captive by social convention." In other words, I think Kester's suggesting to us is that this is kind of a countercultural approach to life, and it may be John by having that strange grammatical thing that we don't pick up on in English because it gets all cleaned up for us by the translators. But that maybe he's saying, look, you know, we, we have an approach to life that's very different from how other people go. So we're even gonna speak a little bit differently on occasion. And one of the fascinating things about Revelation is that it is so countercultural. It challenges the, the, the general society and challenges the way things are, which is very upsetting to those of us who are very comfortable in society, you know? It's a challenging word.
Uh, and I, and I think to me, the other thing about, about the, for calling God, um, you know, the one who is and was and is coming, is just, is the, 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 the three-in-one nature of it. Um, I, that, that might be pushing it a little bit to say this is a sign of the Trinity, but I, I think any, anytime we see a three, a, a triple, you know, relating to God, that reminds me of, of the Trinity. And I wouldn't push it to say, well, God the Father is the one who was, and God the Son is the one who, I, I don't think that's, that's fair, but, um, but it's just another sign that, that, uh, you know, that God is in God's nature and community.
Yeah, John probably wouldn't know what we, if we used the word Trinity, he'd try to scratch his head and say, what are you talking about? You know, but this is one of those bits of pieces of the, the Bible that our understanding of Trinity gets built from. You know, it's not that John believed in the Trinity as we, we comprehend it, but it's the stuff out of which it was built. It's an emerging Trinitarian thought, you might say.
There you go. And one, one last thought I have about this, this section here is, uh, is just, just a reflection that, uh, that this is a book that opens with someone named John who proclaims that Jesus is coming, which, um, reminds me of the way all of the gospels start. You know, that the, all of the gospels, um, open with John the Baptist, um, say, or if, if not open, the kind of the story proper gets started with, with John the Baptist out in the desert proclaiming that Jesus is coming. You know, it, it's, it's not, you know, this is not the same John, obviously, um, but, uh, but I think that that's just a, a little, a little wink of reminder that, uh, that this book is just as much good news as the, as the gospels are. So.
I think I once read a commentary by someone who claimed it was the same as John the Baptist, but there's all sorts of claims out there that are made.
So after Herod had John beheaded, John went to Patmos and wrote this.
I made a little wrong bit, but there was something about it, it was rooted in John the Baptist and that John would have written, that John the Baptist would have written this before he died. Yeah, much of it. There was some argument to that effect, and I don't, this was, I read this thirty years ago, so I don't remember the detail. It just reminds us, there's all sorts of theories out there about where this book came from.
Yeah, as you know, I am the, uh, the only person in the world named Michael. If you've known some other If you've known some other Michael or Michael on the way, that's, that's also me, because there's only one of us.
Yep.
And you dad, you are the father, the earthly father of Jesus. And you are the son of Jacob, who had this multicolored coat. You were the only Joseph there's ever been.
That's right.
I think sometimes what drives people to, uh, need to have fact in front of them, you know? And the ultimate truth is they can't live with uncertainty and they have to have everything certain, you know? This has to be just right, like the archaeological dig to find the bone that connects this to Jesus or whatever, you know? It, it, it's the best people have in life. And, you know, I'm just coming to realize that more and more as I get older to understand people as to why they would, you know, choose the decisions they make. You know, they have to have certainty. And if they have certainty, that's why they act the way they do. So it sort of increases my understanding.
I think that's a really important reflection. Thank you, Karen. Um, you know, I think, you know, when, when we're living in an uncertain world and certainly, yeah, certainly, um, we all have been over the last 18 months. There is a, a great internal struggle to find something to hold on to. And, and I think that the, we can see the book of Revelation as we read through it as, as kind of an alternate way to look for certainty in the world. Um, a way, a counter-cultural way to say, you know, um, there is certainty out there, but it's not, it's not where you think it is. So, so they, thank you for that. And let's, let's hold on to that thought as we go. Hey, anything else about these verses?
There, there's something else about one to three, I think is important. If we can go back there. Where, where John says that favorite is the one who reads the words of this prophecy. Uh, maybe we ought to talk about prophecy a little bit. Do you want to say something or you want me to say?
No, you go ahead. You go ahead.
All right, um, what, what often to when people hear that word prophecy, what they think of is that someone's predicting the future. And that's one definition of word prophecy, but in the Bible prophets aren't so much those who predict the future as those who call people to God. They call people to God. They call society to account. They speak up on behalf of social justice. So we need to hear this word prophecy in, in its entire, entire biblical context, which isn't so concerned about predicting future events as it is calling people to God and calling people to live according to what God wants. And, and so it's important, I think, that as we read through Revelation, we not get caught up in the predictive nature as most people have over the years, but also look for places where John's calling for social justice and care for the weak and the, and, and the poor.
When you say that, I reminds me of something I read about that prophets can be stoned, so watch out. You know, if you're going to be a prophet in the world, you have to expect that he's stoned.
I, I, I think one prophet in, in recent history, um, that, 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 that was basically stoned was Martin Luther King Jr. Um, I think he is the, the biblical definition of a prophet. You know, he didn't predict the future, but he most certainly, you know, spoke the truth to power and, and called people to account, um, and proclaimed, proclaimed that there was a future. Much like the prophets, you know, in the Bible did, and much like the prophets in the Bible, he got killed for it. All right. Anything else about these, uh, these opening verses? All right, then let's start reading at verse nine. "I, John, your brother, who shares with you in the hardship, kingdom and endurance that we have in Jesus, was on the island called Patmos because of the word of God and my witness about Jesus. I was in a spirit-induced trance on the Lord's day, and I heard behind me a loud voice that sounded like a trumpet. It said, write down on a scroll whatever you see and send it to the seven churches, to Ephesus, Smyrna, Pergamum, Thyatras, Sardis, Philadelphia, and Laodicea. I turned to see who was speaking to me, and when I turned, I saw seven oil lamps burning on top of seven gold stands. In the middle of the lampstands, I saw someone who looked like the human one. He wore a robe that stretched down to his feet and he had a gold sash around his chest. His head and hair were white as white wool, like snow, and his eyes were like a fiery flame. His feet were like fine brass that had been purified in a furnace and his voice sounded like rushing water. He held seven stars in his right hand, and from his mouth came a sharp two-edged sword. His appearance was like the sun shining with all its power. When I saw him, I fell at his feet like a dead man, but he put his right hand on me and said, "Don't be afraid. I'm the first and the last and the living one. I was dead, but look, now I'm alive forever and always. I have the keys of death and the grave. So write down what you have seen, both the scene now before you and the things that are about to unfold after this. As for the mystery of the seven stars that you saw in my right hand and the seven gold lampstands, here is what they mean. The seven stars are the angels of the seven churches and the seven lampstands are the seven churches." So what strikes you here?
Would you go back to the part where it's, uh, the, the tongue, the tongue is, has two sides. What's that?
Uh, I think you're looking at verse 16 on the bottom here. Uh, "From his mouth came a sharp two, a sharp two-edged sword." Is that? Is that what you're referring to?
Came a sharp, yes, that's it. Two-edged sword. I'm thinking two-edged doesn't sound like it's the truth, you know? When you say you're two-edged, you're forked tongue, you have two sides, doesn't sound good. And a sharp sounds, doesn't sound good either. So I'm wondering what that means.
Well, I, you know, I, I think of this as saying this is where, um, this is what the weapon of the spirit is, you know? Where, where, where is the weapon that this person has? It is the word. It is what comes out of the mouth. You know, how can, how can this, uh, you know, this being, um, you know, defeat the forces of evil through what comes from his mouth, which is very Jewish, very, um, biblical, that the idea that, uh, that it is through God's word that, um, that all these things are done. So I think that's, uh, you know, I, I view that as a, as an image of, um, of how, of how word is powerful.
Okay. And I, now that I'm reading the, the notation in my revised standard version, says that it's metaphor for both the word of God and judgment. So now I can see that that's what that means by, but I was thinking when I first saw it, it is something negative, you know? There's something, uh, sharp and very hard, very, um, not very loving. And that it's a two-edged where it's, you don't know whether to trust that or not, whether it's forked tongue. No, but the way it's explained, it's partially the word of God and that if you're not really following the word of God, it's judgment. And only God judges. We don't.
Yeah, I probably would have taken that negatively like Karen is saying. Uh, but then I guess when you really think about it, a two-edged, uh, so if a sword is only sharp on one side, it's not as strong or as wielding as having like sharp side, sharp on both, both edges. I, I would have taken it negatively too. So, uh, it's good that you're saying that it's more like strong, um, versus negative. Um, in my translation back in, uh, verse 12, where it says, uh, um, "I saw someone who, uh, looked like the human one." My translation says, "I saw one like the son of man."
Yes.
Um, so.
And, and, oh, go ahead.
I, I was going to say, because my translation says the son of man, that I automatically assume that we're speaking about seeing Jesus, but when, when it says, I saw someone that looked like the human one, then I'm not sure that image comes as readily like, but obviously that must be what the intent is then, so.
Yeah, the, the translation I'm using here uses, uh, what, what's a pretty recent development in, in, uh, in biblical understanding that, um, you know, literally the phrase son of man. I mean, if you think about what that means, it really does mean human one, you know? Um, every, every human being is either the son of man or the daughter of man. And, uh, and there's, there's a sense that, that there's kind of a relatively recent thought that when Jesus refers to himself as son of man, that, that what, what he's identifying there is that, is that he is the truest human there is, that what we are made to be is, um, is, is like Jesus. And because of sin, we've all felt fallen short of that. Um, so this, uh, this translation kind of, um, you know, leans into that, although there, there is always a, uh, um, a footnote that says, or son of man, because that's most certainly the, the traditional one. So in this translation, even in the gospels where Jesus called himself son of man, we, we would use the phrase human one. Um, so they are, they are the same, the same thing there. But I think there is another, um, clue that this is Jesus talking that comes on, uh, on, on the next screen. Um, in verse, uh, verse 17 and 18, when, when he says, "Don't be afraid. I'm the first and the last and the living one. I was dead, but look, now I'm alive forever and always." And that's, um, I think it's, it's the, you know, the, the, the was dead, but now is alive that, that clues us in, um, kind of beyond any doubt that, that this is, this is Jesus here, though he, he looks different than Jesus probably looked to, uh, you know, to those who knew him in earthly life. Um, because what does he have? He has, uh, white hair and fiery eyes and brass feet. Um, and, and I'd love to hear what a voice that sounds like rushing water sounds like.
This is one of many passages in Revelation that are very detailed and very picturesque. And artists have tried to depict them over the years. And, and I recalled it a few years ago, we, we bought that Bible for the library.
Yes.
And, and I was just, I don't know if this would work, but, but could you think about maybe for the future, showing us some of those?
Absolutely. I'm going to make a note to do that. I will scan some pictures from that and we'll, we'll share those on the screen for this. Absolutely.
What, what was that Bible called?
The St. John's Bible.
The St. John's, okay. Not illuminated or anything like that, just St. John's Bible.
Yeah, I will absolutely do that.
We, we don't have the, do we have the whole Bible? I thought we
We do.
Had like a section of it.
No, we have the whole thing. I mean, we don't have in, in, in its original form, it's, it's huge. We have the, um, you know, the kind of the, the trade copy of it, um, which, which cost a couple hundred dollars. If we wanted to get one the size of the original, it would have been thousands of dollars, but we, we have the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't realize we had the whole thing.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion. That's, that's a, that's a great idea. I'm sure the artist who did that has some beautiful stuff in, in the Revelation section. So John starts this section, um, in verse nine here by, by identifying that he is, he's a brother to those who are reading this because he shares in, in what? What, what is he sharing in with them?
Your hardship, your kingdom and your endurance.
Yeah, which, which is, uh, you know, I think a sign that, that indeed John was writing this to people who were persecuted. Um, and if he was in Patmos in exile, then he was, then he was certainly persecuted that way. But even if, if that wasn't why he was there, he, you know, he certainly knew persecution. But at the same time, he knew the endurance that, um, that, that the people had through, through Christ. So he, he connects himself with these, um, with these people. And then, and then very matter of factly says, well, I was in a trance one day. Which, uh, you know, uh, the Lord's day would have been Sunday. By this point, the church was already, um, in the habit of, of meeting on Sundays, uh, because Sunday was the day of resurrection. And it was, it was common for people to, uh, to, to be in trances like this. And it, it is possible that it was drug induced. It was possible that it was, was not. I mean, when Jesus went out in the wilderness for 40 days without eating, um, you know, certainly he experienced some hallucinations and, and things like that. So it, it could be that, uh, that that's what led to this, but, but in, in the time of, of John, the visions like that, that came in trances like that were, were seen as, as real, real messages from God, that, um, that, that sometimes there's a message God wants to send you and the only way to get it is to, is to, you know, to put yourself into this altered state of consciousness. So. So it's like, so that's, that's why, you know, the, a lot of what's in, in Revelation sounds kind of like a dream because, um, you know, it, it, it is presented as, as kind of a dream, a vision.
What's interesting about that is John does, just doesn't say, I had this really fantastic vision from God. That's not his claim to authority. His claim to authority is he shares in the hardship. We, we, we tend, we tend to give a lot of authority to people who have truly suffered for Christ. I mean, Dietrich Bonhoeffer is remembered to this day largely because he was executed by the Nazis because of his opposition to Hitler. If Bonhoeffer had written very many wonderful books, but, but not suffered because of that, we might read the books, but I think we give him more authority today because he suffers. And the same with Martin Luther King and a guy like John Lewis who got knocked over the head numerous times and in fighting for civil rights. So, so there's part of that. The other thing that John does, he just doesn't have this vision and reports it, but in interpreting it for people, he constantly refers to biblical illusions. It's not just some new thing he creates out of nothing. Whatever it was he saw, he interpreted it through the Bible, through what we would call the Old Testament. That was his Bible at the time. You know, and, and I think that's important to note that it's not just that someone had a fantastic vision and therefore can say stuff. You know, but is that vision in, in, uh, is it true to what God's message has been prior to that? And I think John's use of the Old Testament is his attempt to show that, that yes, what I'm saying to you isn't so much that it's new stuff, but it's a new way of looking at the same old stuff we've been hearing for years.
Yeah. And a good example of that is this whole description of, of the human one or the son of man. Um, that, the, the, uh, the phrase son of man, um, appears in, in one Old Testament book, the one that is most like Revelation, the book of Daniel, uh, or at least the second half of the book of Daniel is, uh, is, is kind of a book of, of this, this bizarre vision, which is in, in some ways like the book of Revelation. And in, in that book, there is, you know, talk that, um, that the son of, that someone like a son of man, you know, came, came down and, and defeated the enemy. And, um, and the description of what, what that person looks like and does is, uh, is very reminiscent of, of what we see here. So John is, um, is definitely, uh, you know, banking on, on his readers, knowing that, that illusion from Daniel. Um, and saying that, that, you know, that, you know, that, that guy from Daniel who was supposed to come and save everybody? That was Jesus. That's at least that's John's standpoint here. So what do you think about this, um, this description of how Jesus looks here? What, um, what, what, what does it, what does it say to you? What, um, what ideas come up, uh, you know, with the gold sash around his neck, his chest, uh, the, the white wool hair, this appearance like the sun shining with its power? What, what does this bring up for you?
Well, I have to tell you that, um, I experienced the zombies for the first time in the last week, two weeks ago, because of my kids said, you have to come to this virtual reality thing. And so I said, okay, I'll go for eight minutes because you go to the rest. But the one that they chose for me was the easiest and the least scary. And it was watching the zombies come at me. They were really scary looking. And I'm thinking, this sounds like a zombie in a way because the fiery flame and the, you know, it's, it's a scary vision for me. Uh, and the sound of rushing water sounds really scary in a voice. I mean, that's like scary. And the sound of rushing water sounds really scary in a voice. I mean, that's like scary. So except for the white wool and the hair, I the fire, everything else is scary. It's it's meant to impress, that's for sure.
I'm reminded reading this of the transfiguration, the story when when Jesus took Peter, James, and John up the mountain, and he was was transfigured and his clothing became dazzling white and his face shined. And I I think that to me, there's a similar thing here that it reminds me of that, that this is a sign of Jesus in his glory and in his his power.
The gold sash I'm thinking is a sign of authority. It symbolized authority.
Maybe sashes in those days, you know, symbolize something, you know, if you had a little rope. Depends on what stash you had.
It was certainly a frightening experience, because John says that he fell as one who had died. So and it it can be a frightening thing to come into the presence of Jesus.
And I'm gonna go to the next screen here. Because in verse 17, the first thing Jesus does here is he put his right hand on me and said, don't be afraid. And this is, I haven't checked it, but I think it might be that might be the first thing that every single angel says in any angelic appearance in the scripture is don't be afraid. Which tells me that angels probably didn't look like beautiful people with wings. They were probably pretty scary. But that's, you know, that's the the first thing that Jesus does here is is recognize you're afraid because of, you know, the the glory of this, but but don't be, you don't need to be afraid of me, you know me. What do you think of the image that the seven churches are symbolized by seven lampstands? What do you think that might might tell us?
They're shedding the light. They're spreading the light.
And I guess maybe a lampstand is also something that's in a specific place, you know, it's not a lamp that you carry around from place to place. It's a it's a kind of a rooted lamp that shines light on a particular area, and maybe that's maybe that that's a symbol that that that's what what churches are called to do is is not to bring light to the whole world, but to bring light to this to this part of the world and trusting that there are other lampstands for the other parts.
Kind of makes me think of a lighthouse that the lighthouse shines the light out. The lighthouse doesn't move, but it helps guide the ships to not like be crushed on the rocks. And so maybe the lampstands are supposed to help help the light shine out to others. But yeah, be rooted where the churches are, I guess.
Yeah. And where are lamps? Where are lighthouses placed? In dangerous places, you know, specifically because that's where they're needed. And maybe that's a sign too. Okay, well, that is the end of oops, that is the end of chapter one. What would you expect the rest of the book to be based on on the first chapter? What do you think the the message might be that's gonna come through?
And the all powerful Jesus, and if you don't watch that, I'm gonna crush you. You know, I don't know. I mean, I mean, this is a really awesome Jesus. The image is gonna change in a couple chapters, we'll see. And we got a whole other image of Jesus, which is one of the fascinating things about Revelation. Here he's depicted as as a very powerful being, later it's gonna be depicted as a lamb that was slain.
There'll be more detail, I would expect, because this is a general over, you know, intro. So I I would, I didn't read on, I haven't read this yet. I mean, we read it before during that, but I don't remember. Let me have that little classic you had pastor. But I don't, but I would expect to have more detail when we go on.
Would this would this pique your interest? Would would you, if you heard this for the first time, would you think, oh, I really want to know what's coming next? So John's John's a half decent writer, you know, he's able to to kind of get get people connected this way. And he also claims it's authority that that, you know, I know you, I know you're suffering and and the one who's talking to me, who's telling me this stuff is Jesus himself. So listen up. There's a there's a roller coaster coming. Okay. Well, that'll do it for today. We'll start chapter two next week. And any last thoughts or reflections or questions? And thank you very much. Enjoy the the nice weather as it dries out out there. So.
Yes, it's beautiful. And we've even got some wind to go with the sun, so it's drying things that fast.
Yeah. Yeah, it really, when I went out this morning, I really felt like like it was autumn. It really felt like a
Yeah. Yes.
All right.
Hey, everybody. Have a good day.
Bye.